Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Brisbane Planning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 27, 2018, and I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
President.
Commissioner Mackin.
Here.
Commissioner Minier.
Here.
Commissioner Seisan.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we have one item on the consent calendar, which, and before I get to that item, let me just, let me tell you what the consent calendar means. It says the items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion, adopting the planning commission, the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So I'm asking all of you, anybody wants to take the item from the consent calendar?
Nara.
Nara, we got one, Nara. I guess nobody else?
No.
Okay, so this is an approval of draft action minutes of January 23, 2018, regular meeting.
Actually, if I may, Chair, can I make a motion that we adopt the agenda for Tuesday, February 27?
I second their motion.
I thought we did, over the adoption of the agenda, okay. Okay, let's make, let's go with the adoption of the agenda first, okay. I got a, Ms. McKinn, is, you made a motion?
Yes, you have a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we adopt the agenda. I have to slow down every time a rush is into that, trying to get home early, I guess, or whatever the reason is, then I miss one of the items. Okay, so back to the consent calendar, okay. So approval of the draft action minutes, and may I have the motion for that?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the draft action minutes from January 23, 2018, regular meeting, as written.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so approve, and next is oral communication. Anybody in the audience want to say anything to the commission on the items that are not listed here? You will get the chance to talk about the items that are on an agenda, but this is something that's not on the agenda tonight. I don't see anyone, written communication, first time, I have nothing here. Okay, so we start with item G, which is a new business, and first item on that is public hearing, interim use permit UP-8-16, and the item is 575BUP-8-16, 575B Tunnel Avenue, C1 Commercial Mixed Use District. And this is a application for interim use permit for a five-year term to allow for outdoor storage slash staging of up to 750 rental passenger vehicles for AVIS Budget Group on a vacant, approximately 4.8 acre portion of the Baylands located behind, immediately east of the Transdev Bus Yard as a temporary overflow lot for vehicles rented through San Francisco International Airport, SFO. Land Corpus is an applicant, Tontex USA Incorporated is owner. May I have the staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is requesting approval of an interim use permit to allow for outdoor storage of up to 750 rental passenger vehicles on a vacant, approximately 4.8 acre site in the northern end of the Baylands, as location is shown roughly here on the slide. And here. This would allow for AVIS Budget Group to allow for them to have a temporarily overflow lot for vehicles rented through San Francisco International Airport, or SFO. This would be while SFO is in the process of developing a new rental car facility. Rental company drivers would shuttle vehicles to and from the airport, and rental customers would not be permitted on the site. In brief, the proposal is to use the existing vacant lot located behind the MV Transportation Bus Yard as a storage or staging site for new or nearly new rental cars. Only operable vehicles would be stored at the site, and no vehicle maintenance would be conducted onsite. The use would operate seven days a week with hours up, or up to seven days a week. They have essentially no traffic trips projected in the middle of the week, as seen in the staff report. The vehicle movements would be between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and that's detailed as provided in your staff report. The travel routes would be to and from SFO via Tunnel Avenue and Beatty Avenue. Vehicles would not be permitted to come south to Lagoon Road. Access to and from the site from Tunnel would be through the southern edge of the Transdev Bus Yard, and this was allowed for, the use permit that the Planning Commission approved in October of 2016. The site would be patrolled by a roving private security officer, but there would be no permanent onsite personnel. Prior to occupying the site with vehicles, this vacant lot would be surfaced with gravel for dust control and to provide for a more even surface to prevent water ponding. A perimeter fence would be installed for security, neither site utilities nor structures, permanent structures are proposed, just a fence. Municipal code allows for interim use permits to be granted for up to five years within the Bayland subarea, subject to six findings and two mandatory conditions of approval, and those are provided in your staff report. There's also some other conditions that are included in there. And the proposal meets all of these findings, these are briefly outlined here. First, the use would not have detrimental effects, it's consistent with the past use of the site and the current uses of the neighborhood. The site was previously occupied by industrial use, and the area is industrial in character. Adjacent uses include the Transdev Bus Yard, as I mentioned, to the west, Recology Storage Yards to the north and south, and to the east is the soil and rock recycling operations of UPC's land. As I mentioned, the hours of operation are primarily daytime hours, with some movements after dark. No lighting is proposed with the use, however, a condition of approval is included should the operator determine that temporary lighting is later desired. This would be subject to Planning Director review as a condition. The second finding is that the interim use would not create any significant environmental impacts, and the use meets this finding. The site overlies the former landfill, and was also previously used for a building materials facility, which was removed in 2004. And until recently, it was also the location of a soil pile that was used for monitoring landfill settlement, and that's been removed. So the site is fairly flat and has a mix of paved areas and hardened soil areas by these past uses. The applicant proposes to add a gravel layer to smooth out the depression at the center of the site and prevent water ponding, as I mentioned, and for dust control. And since the site is used to be used for a storage of vehicles, and then there'd be traffic trips, the city retained Metis Environmental Group to analyze potential traffic impacts, and they concluded that there would be no significant impacts from this, nor would there be significant impacts related to air, greenhouse gas emissions, or noise. Both the Regional Water Quality Control Board and San Mateo County Health Department have reviewed the application and do not have objections, they had some conditions of approval that were recommended, though. The interim use is temporary in nature, and it would not obstruct future development. All the required public utilities and infrastructure are available, there's virtually none essentially at the site, except there is the roadway access from Tunnel Avenue. And the use would benefit, be a benefit to the property and/or public in that it would provide a location close in to the airport for rental vehicles that are needed by the airport versus further out sites that AVIS had looked at, which would add to vehicle miles traveled, and so this is as close in as they have indicated that they found. Finally, the finding that it would encourage employment of Brisbane residents, this is a condition of approval, that they provide a program for Planning Director approval of outreach to Brisbane residents for employment. So in closing, staff recommends conditional approval of the requested interim use permit via adoption of resolution UP-8-16, which includes the findings and conditions of approval. I'll mention here, I believe, on the recommendation that you have in your staff report, I have a carryover typo from a previous application, so this is UP-8-16, so when you're ready to make that decision after deliberations, UP-8-16 is the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff?
I have none.
Did you look into the impact on the traffic, because it's very adjacent to the other bus storage yard that's being used by, I think it's for the, is it the Transdev stuff, yeah?
Transdev, yes. Yes, so Metis looked at both existing uses, this use itself combined with foreseeable traffic impacts from other uses in the area within the timeframe of the project, and concluded no significant impacts.
Because the Beatty Avenue is probably a very rough street right now, and there's a lot of big truck traffic there, all these, San Francisco, the Scavenger Company, their trucks go by there, as well as the big trucks going to that landfill area. So you looked at that, that Beatty Avenue is sufficient capacity to handle all this?
Right, so Metis looked at that, also the city engineer reviewed this and had no comments, except that he did suggest that condition that's included there, that traffic should not go south to Lagoon Road, that he wanted it going up north.
Now, if they're going north, will there be any kind of a signal there, or a light, something, that because there will be more cars turning?
There was, there was no trigger to indicate a signal would be needed.
Because normally, when the next door lumberyard also, they have that fork, you know, forklift, they can go back and forth also, and a lot of people go there to the lumberyard using the same road. So?
Right.
Did the city engineer looked at those factors, to see if there's any kind of a problem?
Right, so he looked at this, and the lumberyard is actually just south of this, so?
Just next to it, pretty much next to it.
So with this, with this headed northbound, out in and out of the city, I wouldn't see a conflict with lumberyard traffic either.
What about the impact on the people going towards the 101, you know, to the Bayshore Street and Tunnel Avenue?
So again, Metis, our environmental consultant, looked at this, and in terms of those intersections, getting on and off of 101, and concluded?
Because the thing is, they're going straight to Bayshore and to 101, that thing backs up quite a bit in the morning. People trying to get into the freeway, from the Tunnel Road to the Bayshore, right into the freeway, and also Third Street, they're all in the same line.
Right.
And there's a munish signal over there, so there is a queuing problem when you look at it in the morning. And I was studying this, in the morning hours, they do have some, quite a bit of moving in Fridays and Monday also outbound from Brisbane. So if there's a queuing problem in the morning, especially in the early hours, 8 o'clock, would that impair their operation during that time, and will cause any kind of bigger jam at that particular location?
The conclusion was that it would not, and I think part of that factor is that the vehicle trips for this proposal are fairly spread out throughout the day, so it's not all of those trips that rush out.
Looking at the chart here, and it says 40 vehicles outbound from Brisbane, 8 o'clock in the morning on Monday, and 9 o'clock also another 40 maximum. So those are the peak hours where a lot of people going towards the, towards San Francisco. So, and I've seen people back off all the way up to the Golden State Lumber. So is this going to add some more? Plus, on top of that, we have the other yard there also. So that's the reason I was saying that this should be, it might trigger a kind of a flashing signal or something at their location, so that they don't make a sudden turn into the heavy traffic. So, somebody looked at that or not?
It was looked at.
Okay, and by a consultant?
Yes, the city's consultant.
City's consultant, okay, so I can rely on the city's consultant, I don't have his report to review, so I will rely on his report, and also I was kind of confused with this chart. It says cars inbound to Brisbane lot average is 0-0-0 most of the days, and Friday, Saturday 25-50 and all that. So what will happen, I mean, how does it work? It's just you bring the cars in on Fridays, and, I mean, Friday, Saturday, and then you take it out on Monday, is that the rest of the days, there is no movement of the cars?
That's what they've projected, this is their estimate, and I think it is, and the applicant can speak further to this, but I think it's reflective of the patterns, because they do have facilities as well on the airport, as I understand, so this is, this is just an overflow site, and so I think on those lower use stays, they wouldn't have the need to tap into these cars.
So it's just a storage only for two days, Saturday, Sunday, because rest of the name is 0-0-0. Saturday through Monday. Looks like the Saturday, the cars are coming to the yard, and Monday, they all leave, Monday, Tuesday.
Well, presumably some cars may stay on the lot.
It says it's 0-0-0.
That's the delta, that.
Well, I'll defer to the applicant to further elaborate.
Okay, and also the number, I was looking at the numbers also, 8 o'clock and 9 o'clock, maximum 20, 45 vehicles, and if you look at the outbound, following Monday is 50 vehicles, so there's a difference of five vehicles where they come from, you know? The inbound, you're bringing 45 cars, and you're taking out 50 cars. You understand what I'm talking about?
Again, I'll defer to the applicant to explain their estimate.
So this table, I don't know, maybe they can explain it to me at that point. Okay, about the, about the security of the lot and the lights and all that, that's according to the code that they are to provide. But any provision for the electrical vehicles, and are they going to provide any terminals for that?
There's, there are no utilities proposed for this site. This would simply be a storage yard for their overflow, so there's no utilities to install to?
There's no charging station or anything. The electric cars come over there, assuming that they will be fully charged, right?
That would be the assumption.
Okay, then there will be no maintenance here, work done there, right? So there will be a security guard there, 24/7?
No, as indicated in the report, it's a roving security guard, so they?
Yeah, but you know, the roving is okay, but there's quite a few cars standing, sitting there, and it's an isolated area, but it's up to them, whatever they want to do, I'm just asking a question. Within the, within the yard itself, there will be provision for the restrooms and all of that stuff, and nobody is going to be there 24/7?
No, that's correct. And the security guard, as they indicated in their description, would be moving about between this site and a couple other sites, so he wouldn't, or she wouldn't be stationed there as a fixed, as a fixed need for facilities.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any more questions. Do you have any other questions? Ms. McKinn?
Okay, Mr. Johnson, you may not like this question, I'm gonna ask it anyway. With due respect for the provision being that this is an interim use permit, and wisely adding the provision that the vehicles must be routed north via Beatty, so I assume, coming from the airport north, they're exiting at Candlestick, correct?
I'll go to the?
I think they have to.
Yep.
Julie, if we can dim the lights?
Yeah, I think they have to.
So, right, this, this is an aerial that I annotated, essentially showing the route that would be proposed. I'm having a hard time picking up my cursor there, but you could see the red lines that go up Tunnel Ave to Beatty, and then, so northbound, right, right, it would do us the circle.
Okay, so let us imagine two scenarios, and I'm sure everyone in this room has imagined these before, foreseeing them in action. 101 north, peak hours, a parking lot. 101 south, some peak hours, especially during the busiest airport departure times. Southbound is very congested. Noting the provision that one of the terms of this permit is honoring this route, north on Tunnel, over on Beatty, south on 101. What's to prevent a driver from saying, "I have to get this car to the airport by XYZ time, and the traffic's not moving, I'm going down Tunnel to Bayshore"? Who's going to monitor this?
So with, with, with any code enforcement case, it's something that, if it's brought to the city's attention, to the planning department's attention, either by resident or we're seeing it ourselves, then it would be subject to enforcement. In this case, enforcement could include it coming back for revocation procedures with the Planning Commission, so they?
But you would have to have a means to identify that this in fact is a rental car, unmarked, going down Bayshore or Tunnel from that area, in violation of this agreement, and I don't see how that's going to happen. So I, this is my main concern. I cannot see drivers in a hurry, under the stress, honoring every single time when they have to get in that queue, as the Chair has pointed out, going south, to wait to get on 101. Any logical person is going to say, "I'm going down Bayshore until I see where the traffic's moving to get on." So it's just a concern, and I don't see how that's going to be monitored.
I think your point's well taken. It is a behavioral, and it's difficult to implement and monitor behavioral conditions of approval. Again, any sort of, you know, and the applicant may speak to how they manage their business plan to make sure that doesn't happen, but again, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, any sort of violation of these terms of the permit are grounds for revocation, so there are consequences to them if they choose to not adhere to the conditions that the commission imposes.
Right, understood, thank you.
Yeah, I think that it will be very difficult to enforce, but the point well taken. My suggestion would be, in order to alleviate that problem, is to remove the moving of the vehicles in the peak hours, and only allow during the known peak hours, so that they can, there will be a little less impact. Because if you start 8, 9, 10, those are the very, really heavy peak hours where everybody wants to get to the freeway. So if you limit the operation during, and they don't have that many cars to move, so if you limit it within the known peak hours, that may resolve some of the issues that I have, and also the commission and McKinn is.
I'll let the applicant speak to what issues that might raise. I would draw your attention also to the condition of approval regarding that, that there's also, the second part of that condition is that signage advising this restriction, that's regarding the prohibition of going south onto Lagoon. Signage advising this restriction shall be placed at the egress point of the storage yard, subject to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Well, the thing is, no matter what you do, there's going to be a violation, and there's no way, you know, it can be enforced. So I think we have to come up with some practical solution to avoid that during the peak hours, or the times when they will be tempted to take the exception. So I think, my opinion will be, and I will suggest that later on to the applicant also. So, anyone else has any things to add?
Maybe this is something the applicant can address, but I don't know if they were considering putting any security cameras on the property, so that, you know, we could, with the security cameras, monitor the traffic. And then also, you know, having all these cars on this lot, there's that concern of potential vandalism or whatnot, theft, so I think having a camera there for that purpose would be a good idea, so I don't know, that's something they?
Yeah, I think that will, they probably have to require by insurance also, the insurance company probably will require that, and also the required lighting, if they're going to store the vehicles. If they don't put it, I will be surprised, but anyhow. Any other questions? Okay, at this, yeah, I'm gonna start the public hearing now, so, okay, we'll start with, we're gonna start the public hearing now, and we will start with the applicant first. Can you come to the podium and state your name?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'm Howard Pierce, I represent Universal Paragon Corporation, and we also have a representative from AVIS as well, to answer any of your questions.
Okay. We have the applicant here, anybody has any questions? I need the answers of the questions that I raised, and you will be the appropriate person to ask, or the AVIS people?
Yes, I think it's operational for AVIS, so I'm going to defer to him.
Okay. If, if nobody has any questions with that?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Crowe, I'm with the AVIS Budget Group.
Can you speak in the mic?
Yes, I'm not familiar with the chart, but I do have a general idea about the timeframes. The purpose for this overflow lot is the, in San Francisco Airport, they do, are a lot of commercial business, the AVIS Group, they rent a lot of vehicles on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, are their peak periods. During the summer season, we have maybe about 10,000 vehicles in our fleet. Our capacity at the SFO Rental Car Center is 1,000. So we're soft on the weekends, we have a lot of cars that return back on Thursday, Fridays, henceforth you see the vehicles going from the airport QTA center into the storage lot, and then henceforth on Monday, the vehicles returning. I don't imagine that they would have a very early start, because the vehicles are not going directly to the airport, they're going to the QTA center, where they would be serviced, and then from that point, put on the ready line. So it's not a matter of vehicles going out heavy in the morning, it's more a light, things, but they're very stored, they wouldn't have the capacity in the morning, so it would be more later on, towards the day, when they ended up with some space at the airport facility. In regards to your question, that we do direct people which are ready to go, obviously, our folks are not in a rush, we don't hurry people, they're not running to meet a renter or anything like that, these vehicles are all going, just to be certain. These vehicles are all going just to be serviced at the QTA center. So obviously, um, ours directive would be to make, take the most direct route, and which forth is be up there through US 101 and through Beatty Avenue.
What is QTF, where is the QTF?
That's the quick, the turnaround area downstairs from the rental car center, where all of the rental cars are cleaned and washed and vacuumed, checked for service. All of the rental car companies are basically down there. It's down, and you see the rental car center when you pass on the left with like five floors. It's down below, only on one floor, directly underneath the runway.
So if you modify that chart that is listed here, can you make such a way that there is no cars in between the peak hours?
We wouldn't have a, a problem with that, peak hours. Like, we wouldn't, we do not wanna get stuck in traffic ourselves.
Yeah. So if you change it to that, you know, instead of eight, nine, 10, we start from 10 until four o'clock?
That would be fine, yeah.
Also, the discrepancy in the total, totals here, I was looking at it just...
I, I'm not familiar with the, with the chart. I don't have a copy.
I don't know who prepared the chart, but it's 45 coming in and...
I, I heard you, yeah.
Fifty going out.
The balance only needs to happen over the course of a week, presumably, if you add up all of those numbers.
Yeah, I think I added up, and there is a little discrepancy here in number of vehicles coming in and going out. But anyhow, that's not a big concern. My concern is the traffic jam, you know? And I, I guess that in the condition, we will put that and you will not have no problem, right?
Correct, that's not a problem.
Okay.
You're correct, we do not, we would not have vehicles stored on that lot whatsoever. So come Tuesday afternoon through Thursday, all of our vehicles hopefully will be on rent. You know, so they would not be stored at...
It's only for the weekend operations, that's basically looks like.
That's correct. And we, we talked about the roving. We do have a facility here at 513 Echols Avenue in South San Francisco. I have another facility at 230 Harbor Way and another facility at 130 San Mateo Avenue, also in South San Francisco. We will have a roving security person from monitoring those particular lots.
Now, Avis Group is pretty big, you know, actually, your Payless and all the other cars are all...
That's correct.
Part of your group.
We do our own Avis budget, Payless and all sorts of car. No objection to a camera whatsoever. The lighting will look into further. We do have some lots where we do not have lighting, particularly in, in Burlingame right now. I can't say that we have not had any vehicles taken from us, and certainly that's not something we want to happen. Obviously, each one of our vehicles are 20, $30,000. So we do have a big concern about security.
And when you say roving security, like how often would they be at the...
That would be their main sites. I would imagine they would probably pass at least once an hour.
And this site is a little bit isolated than the Burlingame, so you probably will need a little better security here.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask, could you characterize when you say that there's a shuttle that brings drivers to this lot? Is it a shuttle where one driver has to go? Are they, are they going in groups of 10 or 20?
All right, um, they operate 12 passenger vans. They do not, we do not fill them to capacity. We operate about nine or 10 vehicles in a 12 passenger van. There is a lead driver who follows the vehicles or the, uh, drivers would leave the QTA area, come up to the storage lot, park the vehicles. There's a chase driver who follows them with the shuttle van, will pick up the vehicles. There's gonna be no restroom or any facilities there. So they will just get in the shuttle van and proceed back to the QTA center.
So it's not just single occupancy in the shuttle, one at a time?
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I got one slip from the audience, Barbara Ebel, San Bruno Avenue.
Good evening, Barbara Ebel. I hope we can welcome Avis to Brisbane. I did have a couple of thoughts, though. I know they were digging recently out at the lumberyard and it was, they didn't get very deep before they hit trash. So I think for everybody's safety, um, I would like the city to require them to do a few borings to make sure there really is two feet of cover there because we don't really know that, and I think it is necessary for everybody's safety. Also, condition D, um, they, it says they can't use Lagoon. I think that that, I think that that should be expanded to say they can't use Bay Shore or Lagoon because, um, everybody knows that sometimes when 101 is really bad, huge amounts of traffic will bail off of 101 and just choke up Bay Shore. So I would like to see that condition expanded. And, um, my final thought was that, um, I think we have to be realistic that some drivers are maybe going to do that sometimes. And I don't think anybody wants to drag this back before the planning commission to revoke their use permit. I think that's draconian and nobody will follow through on it. So, um, I was going to suggest that maybe some provision for some small fine is made so that if they do get caught, it's not a question of, you know, the guillotine or walk away from it.
The police can give a ticket to them, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, just like a, a small fine or something so that they get a little reminder that they're not supposed to be doing that. And those were my three thoughts, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else want to speak before the commission? Okay. Dana Dilworth?
Thank you, Chairman and fellow Commissioners. I've been trying to listen as to whether there would be a bathroom facility, and it sounds like it's no, although you had made some mention of there being a necessity for it, and I frankly think it should be there. I'm a person who has one kidney and a small bladder and, you know, I make decisions of where I go when I know where the restrooms are. And I think that to assume that people coming to this location wouldn't have any needs is erroneous. So I believe there should be a condition requiring, um, some type of porta potty and hand cleaning facility. I'm concerned about the dust and the fact that this is downwind from two toxic burners out there. And while you have notice here or have a clause S for some insurance to indemnify the city, I think that that should be very clearly stated that you understand that there will be dust issues out there and that, um, the city is, um, not gonna clean the cars for them or anything like that, that, that this is, in my opinion, I would choose to house my cars rather than leave them out in the open in such a windy area. The other thing I think is there should be some type of fire express, uh, suppression or extinguisher system. You're gonna have 750 vehicles with volatile chemicals in them and maybe somebody will have a fire extinguisher, maybe not, if something happens. I, I don't consider that, um, to be adequately addressed. And, um, the last thing I would suggest is while they are stating that they have permission to, um, move on the transdev, um, driveway, as it were, I think you should see that in writing, a condition that the transdev people allow them to pass through that, what is currently considered their property. Because I would hate to approve this and have them come back and say, "Hey, we can't access our property, we lost permission." So those are a couple of things that I see seem to have been overlooked, and I would appreciate it being handled, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wants to make any comments on this application? Nothing, so... Dana, I think you made a couple of good points, and I will bring it up in the deliberation when we talk about that. So entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Okay, now it's time to discuss what we're gonna, what conditions we're gonna put on this or impose on this application. So one of the first thing was to change the hours of service, and I think the applicant is agreeable to that. So, uh, we can put the hour of service from 10 to 4. Is that agreeable to all the Commissioners? I think that's a...
I don't know if the applicant even cares about really early operation, but I, I think that before peak hours might also be acceptable.
Yeah, so the, before, I mean, in the morning, eight to 10 is a, pretty much a peak hour, right?
Seven to 10.
So it's, no, they don't go into seven to 10 anywhere. So we can say that they can start at 10 until 4. Would that be acceptable to all of you?
I, I would still list it as a negative declaration of the hours they shouldn't go in case they wanted to expand their schedule.
So, John, we're looking...
I think there are two ways of doing it. One is you could exclude, you know, you could exclude seven to 10 and four to six.
Yes.
As opposed, so if they do have, because they did have some later hours, and I think that's what Commissioner Anderson was getting at. So that's, would be the exclusionary route if you wanna go that, whatever, or whatever hours you...
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what I would recommend.
So that condition you're gonna change, uh, Kevin?
Ken?
And the other thing is regarding the concerns that Dana Dilworth brought, I think there is a need for some kind of a facility there to, for, you know, there'll be so many cars coming in and so many people will be there. So would it be possible, and I don't know whether it's gonna be very cost, costly or not, but to put a little, a little shed there with a minimum facilities, like a toilet and all that?
A porta potty would...
A porta potty, and maybe someplace where you have some fire extinguishers or something like that. So in case of emergency, you have something right there. 'Cause that's required for any, any kind of a garages or anywhere. OSHA requires that, Cal OSHA. So I think in this particular case also, since you're gonna have that many cars parked there, it doesn't have to be a very elaborate system with water and everything else like that.
If you can approach the...
Approach the...
A portable toilet facility is about $150 a month, and the fire extinguisher's not, not an issue for us either.
Yeah, so that's, that will really improve a little bit of concerns that, you know, we have. So thank you very much for accepting that. So we can add that to the condition also. And regarding the dust and all that, I mean, that's, that, that you already know about that, and I think it will be your responsibility if anything happens to the cars as a result of the dust. I don't think city will be liable for that.
May I make a recommendation with regard to that? Since you're putting down a layer of gravel and you're running that many cars through, gravel dissipates. You'll, you'll have the main securitus route there, it'll be down to dirt. Can we put in perhaps a condition that you must maintain those gravel pathways so that they, they don't end up being dirt? 'Cause then it is going to blow.
Yeah, that's true, too, so... And I think that will be part of the preventive maintenance anyway. So they will have a maintenance program, uh, which I guess they will submit to the stop, for the review, as how often they are to resurface, whether it's gravel or anything like that, so...
Right, so we can, um, we can add to that condition essentially to maintain it with gravel to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Yes, perfect, perfect. Okay, anything else you want to add to that?
I have a...
Ms. Anderson, or...
Sorry.
I have a question for staff. I'm just wondering if there are any existing, um, traffic code regulations that could be used for enforcement without inventing something new? I mean, personally, I don't think that this is likely to be a huge problem since the cars are going to be going in convoy, and it seems like it would be kind of egregious for the lead convoy driver to decide to diverge from the route. But if they did and they were following the speed limit and stopping at the stoplights, could local enforcement stop them, or what?
Anybody, I mean, the zoning ordinance, you know, this use permit is governed under the zoning ordinance, which, you know, the Public Works Director, the city manager, the police, any police officer, planning director, anybody can implement or enforce the zoning ordinance under the city, so... So yes, any violation of the zoning ordinance is not a traffic violation per se, but... And there are administrative penalties in the zoning ordinance as well for, you know, it's basically like a ticket, a citation for violating the ordinance. So it doesn't have to go, you know, straight to a, a use permit elimination or, you know, we can, there are other means where violations, if they were to occur, could be administered.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, uh, Ms. Anderson?
I also think that the recommendation that the depth of soil be checked before they start doing the gravel would be a really good idea to make sure that, or maybe the applicant has already done that.
Yes, we've, we've done a geotechnical investigation on that site, and we do have several borings on there to show that the depth of, uh, cover is, is adequate.
What is adequate?
The depth of the cover.
No, I'm, I'm saying what, what is that?
Three, three to four feet.
Three to four feet?
Yes.
And did you also do borings at Sierra Lumber after the incident? Where, I don't, was that not reported?
Sierra Lumber is not our property.
Oh, no, okay, no, we'll never mind that.
And if there was some change to the plan where it would require us to do any excavation and we didn't excavate into the waste layer below, we would treat that according to state code and if necessary, haul it off to the appropriate landfill.
And I presume you've already submitted those borings to staff? The records there?
They have the, the records as part of the, um, previous investigations. I can reiterate that if, if you need them.
The previous investigations were done when? Approximately?
There was one that was done several years ago. The, the most recent one was approximately 10 years ago.
Okay, so move on with that. Anything else you want to add in the conditions of approval?
I would like to ask a question of staff. Looking at this project and the conditions and hoping that they comply with everything that they agree to, are these ever, as interim uses, given a caveat that they're reviewed, say, after the first year? Rather than us chasing, "Oh, you're not complying," but just that we say, "Okay, after a year, we're gonna look and see whether this is working because I do have concerns." And I'm, I'm hoping that they will comply. You're giving us your assurances, but again, um, is that ever done?
I think in the past, we have done it for a couple of those instances, uh, as I recall.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, it's not a standard requirement, but if the commission wants to do that, um, in terms of when we're talking about monitoring behavior, for the most part, I think is, I mean, obviously, the, the gravel and whatnot, that would be done as a matter of course through public works inspections. So they would be, they would be doing that real time. They wouldn't wait for a planning commission review to tell them that they need to put more gravel. So we're talking about the behavioral aspects, right, of the drivers?
Yes.
You know, the hours. So, you know, the, the, probably the challenge is the investigatory part of that because unless we're gonna send staff out there to watch hours of operation and we're gonna be relying on either anecdotal evidence from the applicant or others in the community, so, you know, the expectation of how much sort of investigation the commission expects staff to do with behavioral activities is, I think, an open question to me. If we were to come back for a year, it wouldn't necessarily be very useful for us to give you a report that the applicant says everything is fine out there. I don't think that's really your purpose or much value to that. So, I mean, if you have a certain purpose and we can actually implement that, I think we're glad to, you know, revisit it with you as a group. We need to have some more guidance as to what exactly we're trying to accomplish.
Thinking about the fact, one of the beauties of Brisbane is that people will call City Hall, they will... They will call their council members and say, I saw whatever, call the police and say, this is going on. And within a first year especially, if there are that many reports, there's a problem. And I think in one year, we would know whether this should be continued. And that, that's all I'm suggesting. And I would hope that there's no problem because I think it's a great idea. But I, the biggest suspect is on the traffic. Because it, and, and by way of an explanation, it affects people in Brisbane if they can't get home. And Bay Shore is our main artery to get into town.
Well, I think what we can do is in a condition we can put, and this can be reviewed by the planning director on yearly basis or every two years to make sure that they comply with all the conditions. And if there is any problem, they can bring it back to the, to the commission.
That's your choice.
Rather than we make them mandatory to come before us, I think that way, planning department will follow up. And if there is a problem, they can bring it to us. So, can, can you draft something like that in the, one of the conditions too?
Sure.
So, we don't have to see that unless there is a problem. Okay? Would that satisfy your concern?
Yes, I think that's good.
Okay, anything else before we...
I have one more question on the subject of ad hoc enforcement. I was wondering what the proposal was for the video feed accessibility? You know, who would be able to see that and what would be the route for viewing it?
Video feed accessibility.
I think as the applicant indicated, he is agreeable to cameras. That's what I heard.
I mean, like, there could be a camera that has a tape attached to the camera or it could be wireless internet with a web server and there's probably different costs for different...
Yeah, I would suggest we leave that to, you know, basically, to work out the exact system details and city accessibility as part of the condition of approval to staff approval.
So, the proposal is that the operator and city staff would have access to the video?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's also need to be put in, in the condition. And I looked at the condition. E has to be redone completely, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that will exclude the hours of seven to ten AM and four to six PM is what I hear.
But that will be, is that what you were proposing, Commissioner Anderson? Exclusion for the, between seven to ten and...
Oh, yeah, I think seven to ten is good. And do you think four to six is okay or?
So, that's fine.
And also they commute at home by that route.
Okay, so now it's time to take a vote. So, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve interim use permit UP eight sixteen for use this car storage by Avis Rental Company at five seven five B Tunnel Avenue, subject to the aforementioned modifications regarding time of use, installation of a camera, installation of facilities and...
Facilities for, for toilet and, you know...
Yes, facilities.
And the, also the, the fire...
Oh, yes, and fire extinguisher. Yeah, I think that's everything. And we failed to talk about the easement through the trans de bus lot, but I believe that applicant has probably already taken care of that.
Okay, so with that condition, who wants to make a motion to approve?
That was it. I'll second the motion.
But you're, okay, second, sorry, second. Who wants to make, second?
Oh, she's second.
You seconded it already? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess my, my ears are plugged or something. I didn't listen to it. Sorry about that. Then we move to the next item, which will be a very interesting item for all of us to dive into and which is a public hearing on zoning text amendment. And before you leave, I had to talk about the procedure for anyone who wants to file a complaint or... Appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council not later than fifteen calendar days following the planning commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at four one five five zero eight two one one zero. So, anybody in the audience or anybody listening to the, at home, have the opportunity to appeal this. Thank you so much and welcome, Avis. We need your business here. Okay. Okay, so we were on the next item now, which is the public hearing on zoning text amendment, RZ dash two dash eighteen, R one, R two, R three, RBA and SCRO dash one zoning district. And we're looking at the tax amendments to chapter seventeen point oh two, seventeen point oh eight, seventeen point ten, seventeen point twelve, seventeen point sixteen and seventeen forty, seventeen point forty-three of title seventeen, zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Court to update accessory dwelling unit regulations in the R dash BA, R two, R three and SCRO dash one zoning districts consistent with the current state law. City of Brisbane is the applicant and staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Nair. So, the zoning text amendments before you tonight stated would update our accessory dwelling unit regulations to comply with yet another round of updates to the state law pertaining to how local governments can regulate ADUs. So, as you probably recall, last year, just about a year ago, this commission recommended approval of amendments to our ADU regulations that were adopted by the council. Those included eliminating onsite parking requirements for accessory dwelling units and as required by the state law, as well as implementing a ministerial building permit process to allow conversion of existing space in a single-family home or accessory structure on a lot zone for single-family use into an ADU, also required by the state law. The council also opted at that time to eliminate the minimum lot size requirement in the R one district, which was not required by state law, but was also included in the amendments that were adopted. So, in fall of this year, the governor signed into law a suite of housing bills. Among them was a bill amending yet again the state regulations pertaining to how we can permit accessory dwelling units. That updated law requires local governments to allow ADUs in any zone that allows single-family or multiple-family uses.
Any elaborate on ADUs or that the people at...
Accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, so because, you know, it's acronym and some people at home...
I thought I said it one time before, but I'll say it one more time. Accessory dwelling unit is the same as ADU.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, this really broadens the mandate upon local cities. Previously, the state law said it would be, we were required to allow them in a single-family zone. So, we have in City of Brisbane, the R one residential district, which allows single-family homes, does not allow duplex, does not allow multifamily. So, that's single-family zone under that previous iteration of state law. Same applies to the RBA. But again, with this recent amendment, that opens up potentially our, well, it opens up the requirements for our R two district, which in addition to allowing duplexes and small multifamily, allows single-family homes, as well as the R three residential district, which allows multifamily uses duplexes and single-family homes. It also opens up the SCRO one district, which allows with the CUP, a single-family residential development.
Sorry about that. Modern technology.
And so, addressing this new mandate from the state, staff has drafted the zoning text amendments in the attached draft ordinance to the staff report. So, this would amend the R two, R three and SCRO one zone, zoning district regulations to explicitly state that in the case of an existing or proposed single-family home in those districts and accessory dwelling unit would also be allowed. We are also suggesting eliminating the minimum lot size requirements for RDUs across those districts, R two, R three and SCRO one. Also is suggested to eliminate the minimum lot size requirement for ADUs in the RBA district. And that's what I'm gonna spend a little bit more time tonight on in the presentation. So, state law does allow local jurisdictions to consider site-specific constraints when we decide where we can allow ADUs. So, even though there is this broader mandate that in general, we have to allow them or single-family homes are also allowed, if there is a case of either water and sewer service and unavailability or infrastructure, lack of infrastructure, types of, you know, real constraints to development in general, we would have the latitude under state law to say, well, no, even if otherwise you would potentially be permitted to have an ADU, you're not in this case. And while it's not explicitly stated in our existing code, I think we can assume that that's probably a lot of the reason why in the RBA district, the lot size requirement of twenty thousand square foot, feet has been imposed, as well as the fact that most of the RBA is located within the HCP or all of the RBA, San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan. There are obviously a lot of special circumstances that might apply to the RBA where we'd wanna look at how we regulate it very carefully in terms of development. In looking at the recommendations before you tonight, staff noted that in terms of zoning restrictions on development in the RBA, we have within chapter seventeen point oh one provisions that basically restrict any new development or modifications to existing development on any site that is not a legal lot of record and/or is not served by adequate infrastructure or utilities that meet city standards. So, this traditionally has applied to most of the RBA. You know, as certain lots develop and parcel maps are recorded and roadways are installed and utilities are preserved, obviously, they then are not subject to those development constraints. But if a site in the RBA district is not accessed by a public road, does not have utilities, et cetera, they could not do an addition if there's an existing structure that's more than a hundred square feet. That's a one-time addition or they wouldn't be able to develop at all if it was a vacant parcel. So, we have requirements in the code that require certain infrastructure improvements to be made before you can do anything. The other regulations that of course apply to any land within the HCP plan area is analysis of any development or redevelopment or modifications to develop properties within the HCP. So, in that cert, in that case, you know, for an example, should someone want to apply for an existing property in the RBA that's in the HCP, they have a single-family home, they hypothetically wanted to build a detached structure for an ADU, we would have to evaluate that proposal for compliance with the HCP. Every property that has a development permit in HCP, we also require a operating program to be adopted for. So, if there wasn't an operating program originally or perhaps was adopted in a way that wouldn't encompass that type of development, we would be able to take a look at that for making sure it does comply with whatever requirements would be applicable. And of course, the third tool that would impact any development within a sensitive habitat area would be SEQA. So, again, in a case of either substantial new development or redevelopment, if it was not exempt from SEQA, it would require impact analysis potentially. So, taking a look at those existing, not only zoning ordinance policies, but requirements under the HCP as well as SEQA, we are suggesting at this point that it could be considered that we already have the tools to make sure that ADU development only occurs on lots that they're appropriate for. So, that's why the suggestion is to eliminate that lot size. The last part of amendments that deal with the RBA relate to our regulations for how you can develop ADUs in the case of a cluster development or density transfer application. So, in the RBA, there's a, two procedures that basically allow, either by a density transfer whereby a site that has high habitat value, the allowable development density of that site is transferred to a receiving site. And then through a use permit approval and design permit approval, the receiving site could be subdivided into smaller lots, so lots less than twenty thousand square feet in area. Or cluster development where if there's significant habitat value on one site, we would allow development to be clustered and smaller lots to be created so that the habit, the valuable habitat would be protected. In those cases, under that procedure, only one ADU would be permitted per each twenty thousand square feet of the site receiving the density or where the development would be clustered. So, if you had a site that was getting two density transfer units, but the site itself was only twenty thousand square feet, you could have three lots, but you could only have one lot developed with a single-family home and an ADU. So, that is inconsistent with the intent of the new government code requirements regarding how we allow accessory dwelling units in any zone where our single-family homes would otherwise be permitted. So, I'll end there. I'm guessing we're gonna have a lot of questions and discussion. But that staff is recommending, after your discussion, that you recommend approval of these amendments to the city council. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. We'll open up the questions for the staff. Ms. McKinnon, you want to start?
I think I know the answer, but I'd just like it clarified. If you have a mixed-use building that someone claims it is a single-family dwelling because it only has habitable portion for my family, under the definition of single-family dwelling, how would you handle that?
A mixed-use building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, by definition, it couldn't be a single-family home then.
That's what I would, yes.
Right.
So, it would be denied because it has to be literally just a single-family dwelling with no non-residential use.
The, well, right, so the, the state law requires we allow them wherever multiple family uses are allowed, as well as single-family uses. But in our code, an accessory dwelling unit is accessory to a main dwelling, a single-family dwelling.
Right, and the, the area I'm thinking of is, is the southwest, southwest Bay Shore, where you might have something like that.
Right, which in the southwest Bay Shore district, we allow multiple, multiple-family use as well. So, if someone wanted to establish another unit, I would bet they would establish it as a multifamily rather than try to convince us that it's a single-family home within ADU.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Oh, is your mic on?
No questions?
Oh, no, I'm done.
No questions at all for the whole...
My thing was off. It was quite dense, but no, I don't have any questions.
No, no questions?
No questions. First time, huh? Such a big revision and we don't have any questions. I will have a question regarding the density transfer. And is there a limit when you're the receiving side, the site, the size of that and how many units can be, say, if in the Brisbane Acres, there's one acre lot, you want to transfer it to the downtown Brisbane area?
It's only, so I should clarify, and density transfer is only something you can do in the RBA district. So, both the sending site that you're getting the density from and the receiving site have to be in the RBA district. To be a sending site, you have to have certain value for preservation since that's what you're in exchange for the development rights. They would then be preserving that land for habitat.
For the Brisbane acres.
So, you can't transfer it to land in another district. It has to go to a site in the RBA.
So, for, for Brisbane Acres sites to be, to get the density transfer, they have to be in the RBA?
Right. It's, both the sending and receiving sites have to be zoned RBA. They also have to meet other requirements.
But SCRO A is already RBA, right? I mean, that's...
No, portions of the SCRO one are in the HCP.
Yeah, but the one that I'm talking about, the exam... But the one that I'm talking about, the examples we had with, uh, we did a number of years ago with the Joel Diaz property on, uh, when he- they got the density transfer.
Oh, I see what you mean. It was, yes. Yeah, San Diego Court, that project?
Yes.
Those are in the RBA. Oh, I'm seeing our senior planner maybe wants to jump into the discussion.
Yeah, that was, uh, almost for seven years.
You're referring to San Diego Court?
Yes.
Right. So they had a density transfer from a sending site further up the mountain.
Uh-huh.
And it was all within the RBA. That's correct. It borders the R1, but it's at San Diego Court.
The sending site was RBA?
Right. Correct.
Okay. Because there were a lot of questions raised afterwards when we approved that and as some people objected that that shouldn't have been done. But according to our zoning, we do allow that. And this particular change in the state code doesn't prohibit that either, right? I mean, it's- it's also-
It doesn't- the state amendments pertaining to how we regulate ADUs doesn't impact how we manage the density transfer or cluster development process. That's still ours to control.
Okay. Now, as far as the- the, um, environmental impacts and all of that, they still in- stay intact when the areas that needed the- the, uh, SEQA requirements still there, right? Because there was some talk about do away altogether with the SEQA requirement. Is that- that's not the case, right?
Not in this application, I mean. So we're not changing, oh, if you're talking about new state- other state laws, maybe our workshop might help answer those questions. But in the context of this application, the changes that we are proposing to the RBA district regulations don't change the established framework of the density transfer and cluster development process. Any project requesting a density transfer that has to get use permit, design permit approval, any other number of discretionary permits would still be subject to SEQA. So changing, the proposed changes would say, instead of limiting the number of ADUs that could be result from a density transfer to one per every 20,000 square feet of sending site, we are saying, "Well, if you're creating three legal lots from the result of this density transfer, you can have single-family homes on all three of those lots with ADUs rather than restricting it to only one of those lots can have an ADU and the others just have to be single-family homes." That's the scope of this amendment. It's not changing anything else about the density transfer and cluster development process.
Okay. I think that's- yeah, that clarification, thank you so much for clarifying that. I was a little confused with that. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing and I got a only one slip here, Dana Dilworth, rezoning amendment ADU.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and other commissioners. I'm going to question the circulation of this document, the way that it's been done by the city with the 72-hour notice, uh, because when this, um, or the, um, housing element was first circulated and this was part of it, a notice was sent to every property owner in town and you had hundreds of people coming in when, um, the plan was to change all of R1 to basically R2, um, but through the density, um, um, the accessory dwelling unit, ADU. So I do question whether this has been properly noticed to the public. I have some issues with, uh, this being ministerial, particularly with the Brisbane Acres, um, as it doesn't indicate, um, that the neighbors are notified as they would have been in the past, at least that, you know, um, 400-yard radius or whatever that is. Because if a person has a choice between putting a hun- a thousand square feet on top of existing versus a thousand, um, in another place on the lot, which really might not be conforming, um, it, um, it- your neighbor should be notified, especially when no parking is required. I also have problems that, um, in this, uh, case that you don't want to consider lot size minimums or maximums. And, um, I remember I've been following, um, planning for 30-something years and the whole purpose of planning is to set limits and so that it's definable as to what is acceptable and what isn't. And there's nothing worse than coming to these meetings and hearing somebody say, "Well, it's not excluded, so we don't know. Should we or shouldn't we allow this?" And so I actually wanted clarification. Is this one, uh, accessory dwelling unit or sec- secondary dwelling unit per site or one unit per dwelling unit? Because I've heard this kind of go back and forth. When you're talking about Brisbane Acres, you're saying every dwelling unit can have a secondary unit. So my question is, for those of us in the R1 who have non-conforming lots and my, um, prob- land, it's 50 by 100, but one corner's chopped off for the street that the city's taken away for the street. So I have a non-conforming lot. Do I qualify for anything? So when you set this, say here that you're not going to set any limits for, um, the secondary unit in terms of lot line, I can think of this on both sides of the coin of, as a person who supports, um, tiny homes, you would like to have a lot of freedom in lot size, but you haven't- you've stated what your maximum size for a dwelling unit is, but you haven't stated what your minimum size is. And having lived in a dwelling unit that is, um, 600 square feet for two family member in one of the 2,500 square foot lots, I, you know, can already calculate, um, how many more people, if these non-conforming 2,500 square foot lots get accessory units, how- just essentially doubling the size of the town. I don't think you can do that without any regard to, um, the, um, to SEQA. I really question people, even though you've tried to write it into law, I really question whether that's proper and adequate and what people who, um, live in town expect of your esteemed body. I disagree with the statement that the city has made about there being adequate utilities and infrastructure, especially when we see, um, uh, hear people saying that, "No, we don't have the capacity for the sewer. We might be maxed out on water. Um, we certainly don't have fire suppression, um, above, I'm not sure, Kings." I- I know these are things that, uh, we have the intention to rectify, but to say that our town, um, has adequate utilities and infrastructure for the size of the impact of this, I- I truly don't believe that, um, is an accurate statement. So I would suggest that dwelling units should never be any s- uh, short- smaller than 300 square feet. I don't know if she tried to, you know, um, the house that we lived in was 10, oh, anyway, I- I- anyway, that Brisbane has, uh, some modest houses which make it affordable and truly would like that to be the outcome of this kind of- of regulation. But not, uh, like I said, I'm really uncomfortable with there being no limits. Uh, the other thing about Brisbane Acres is the issue in Brisbane Acres is slope stability. Uh, I didn't see that, um, even- even mentioned, but that's one of the things that has, um, held back some development. I think it should be here so that people in the future buying that land know that as an issue. And, um, the very last thing where it's 174330B, I think you should also include some language about secondary egress. Because I hear, one of the things it says is that the person who is getting this unit should be able to have access to the outdoors, but I believe that all fire code requires a secondary egress and there's no mention of that in this. And I think that's required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Regarding the secondary egress, I think that's those- all of those questions are addressed during the time in the application, when you get the application for the ADU, right? Including the slope stability, whether you have the adequate, uh, water supply and all of that. And I think that you- you already mentioned that, that if you don't have the adequate water supply and the sewer system, then, uh, it's not possible.
And we can't grant a permit to develop it, correct?
So it's already covered in- in that regard. And as far as the secondary egress, I think that will be needed anyway when you're- when you're going to provide that. So I think there's a- it may not be here, but I think under the conditions of approval, when it comes before the- before the planning as well as the engineer, they- they will require that those- those things anyway.
Well, just to clarify, an accessory dwelling unit, whether it's a conversion ADU with a building permit which doesn't come to the commission, even if it's a new ADU, um, unless it triggers some sort of other discretionary approval, it wouldn't come to you either. But it would have to meet prerequisites of infrastructure utility. It's- so it's not, we would have to have the property owner demonstrate that where whether they're improving or building new infrastructure utilities, that they are meeting those requirements of the code. Otherwise, we couldn't issue the permit.
Yeah, because-
But the ADU permits don't come to the commission unless there's a variance associated with it or something else.
But the thing is, even the existing, uh, system that's in place, water and sewer and all these other infrastructures, they have to comply before you can do the ADU anyway.
Correct. So if it's a-
In order to add anything. So it will be, uh, under the purview of the city engineer and the planning director.
Yes.
Am I correct?
That is correct.
If the chair will permit, I have a question. I'd like a clarification from staff. I'm under the understanding that on a given lot, there must be 15% is landscaping. Is that correct?
Um, there's a requirement for the front yard block. Well, there's different standards.
Okay.
Lot coverage, is that what you're asking about? In what district?
Um, well, okay, so I don't know if it applies in every district, but here's where I'm going with it.
Okay.
Would whatever requirements in whatever district for maximum lot coverage apply if someone wanted to put in an ADU? Because I think one other concern pops up in a lot of people's minds, myself included, is to whether backyards will become nothing but ADUs and there's just, it- it- I understand in reading the material, the setbacks are preserved, but what about the lot coverage?
Oh, yes. All other zoning, until we're told otherwise by the state of California, all other zoning development standards like lot coverage, floor area, all those building envelope site development standards would remain applicable to an ADU. The only standard that currently we are required to exempt them from is parking.
Yeah. Okay. The next one, and the audience want to speak on the subject of Barbara Eagle?
The chair, we perhaps have staff clarify a couple of the other questions that came up. Um, I was just looking and I didn't see anything in AB 220, sorry, 2299 about the, um, minimum size for the ADU. Is there any such?
There are ma-
Minimum?
Well, I'll answer and then perhaps an audience member will also speak. Um, in the- in the building code, there are minimum sizes for a habitable living unit, which we are fairly confident is-
Well, I was just looking it up. I had it in my head as 180 square feet. I'm- I'm finding sources online that say 120 square feet is a minimum size.
I think it's governed by the building code and I-
That's correct.
I think we discussed that, uh, several meetings ago about the minimum size when-
Right.
The- one of the commissioners suggested about the small home, you know.
Right. So my 180 might have been from a couple of years ago conversation with the building official and it may have been reduced some since. I'm not sure. But anyhow, it's 120, 180, right in that range.
And I'll just say anecdotally, in processing permits and looking at ADUs, we have many ADUs, about 200 square feet. Well, maybe several at least. Um, we do have a large range of unit sizes in the city.
And then also for the sake of clarity, perhaps staff would ask, sir, the questions about neighbor notification and the city council vote on, um, eliminating the lot size minimums.
Sure. So this application, which amends the zoning regulations district-wide, it's not impacting a specific property, does not require property-wide, you know, every property in that district mailings. If it's district-wide, it's not impacting a specific property, the requirements in the government code are to post it in our legal posting places, which we have. Under- and I mean, again, I would also reiterate that it's, this isn't a, while we have a program in the housing element that commits us to making it easier to develop ADUs, um, these changes are coming from state requirements. So it's not a voluntary action on the part of the city, like when we were updating our housing element where we probably have different community engagement strategies when we're trying- getting feedback on housing element programs and that sort of thing. This is in response to a mandate from new state law.
Can I answer you a quick?
Yeah, one of them. And the other question was about the elimination of the lot minimum size, um, which was done by motion of the city council.
Right. So that was not, you did not consider that last year. That came up during the council's deliberations when they, I believe it was in March of last year, to eliminate the R1 lot size minimum for ADUs.
Yeah, I need to go on.
Okay. Next one is Barbara Eagle. Barbara, I wanted you to come earlier, but your husband says that he wants to talk, so I- I had to give him a chance.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for Julia, to Julia for thinking out loud. My only thing I wanted to say is that I beg you, beg you, beg you not to do anything more than the minimum that is required by the state. Because in reading this legislation, um, it's very much saying that there are going to be new requirements that are going to come down the road and that we're going to have to, if we don't meet our arena, we're going to have to show that we did A, B, and C. And I really strongly believe that we need to keep a few cards in our pockets. So while I agree with Julia and the council that we should maybe eliminate lot size requirements and some of these other things eventually because we should be creating a level playing field for our citizens, I very much, very much beg you not to do that this go-around because I really think we're gonna, it- it will leave us no place to go. Next move from Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this, uh, going once, going twice? Nope. So make- I make a motion to close the public hearings.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Who wants to start the comments to, uh, to whatever we discussed so far and what we want to do with this, uh, particular application?
Well, my first comment is that the red line is merely, um, formalizing actions that were already discussed in the planning commission and voted on by the city council. So I don't think that we're discussing the substantive portions of the text tonight. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Oh, I'm- I'm saying that the- the red line text that we're reviewing tonight is merely a response by staff to write down what has already been, um, gone through a public hearing in the planning commission and- and voted on by city council. Is that not the case?
No, the red line attachment is new amendments that- No, the red line attachment is new amendments that you're considering tonight.
And these are in response.
Shown in red, underlined in.
To changes in state law from when we went last year with all, where we had to expand beyond the R one zone into the R two and R three.
But I I thought that the lot size minimum.
In the R one.
For the R one only.
Oh, for the R one only. But that that much was, that was voted on by city council, right?
Yes.
But the rest of it is all new?
Yes.
As a result of this, I think that you have a memorandum here, right, as they talk about workshop two zero seven.
No, that's something else.
State housing legislative.
That's your next item.
Yeah, but this is related to.
No.
This kind of a state.
Um, no, those bills are not related to this.
Okay. So which bill is this one is related to?
A senate bill two two nine.
Two two nine, okay. Okay.
Um, but yeah, so sorry to clarify. So attachment A and the draft ordinance, those are showing brand new, never before seen zoning text amendments related to the newest state law regulations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Now, any of these new ones will affect this one too or not? SB thirty-five and? No?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Ms. McKinnon?
No.
No.
So what your pleasure, I think we should go ahead and approve the amendment of the zoning ordinance.
Well, I have one more question of clarification. I didn't see anything in here except for the removal of the lot size limits that would be any more than the minimum of what was required by state laws. Is that correct?
Are you asking about in, can you just tell me what page you're looking at, then I can understand the context of the question.
I'm talking about actually the totality of the red lines.
So, right. So there are, if you look at the red line text in attachment A under seventeen point four three zero point three zero, or sorry, point zero three zero, the amendments would strike all lot size, reference to a minimum lot size. So under lot size, it would read, there is no minimum lot size requirement. That's related to um the revisions, not only in the R one and RBA, which previously, if you look at the strike, struck and removed language, um, it removed references to the R one and RBA districts, which you can see that previous text said no, no lot size minimum in the R one, but still a twenty thousand square foot minimum in the RBA. So we're striking that now saying no minimum lot size, and that encompasses the R two, R three, SCRO one and RBA districts. So if you look at the preceding red line text excerpts before that, you can see in the R two district that we've now added all those references to ADUs. And then in chapter seventeen twelve, it gets into the more specialized discussion about what to do in the case of a density transfer or cluster development project, which doesn't occur in the other districts. So if that didn't muddy the waters, I hope that clarified a little bit, at least.
Well, yeah, yes and no. But I mean, the reason you eliminated the um lot size minimums in the RBA is that you might come in conflict with state law should a lot be subdefied or dis.
There's two tiers to that. So the conflict with state law we saw clearly was in the density transfer and cluster development context. Right? Where we're basically saying, oh, yeah, you can create a legal lot zoned for single family use, but you can't have an ADU for whatever reasons of the unique process we have for creating that single family zoned lot. So that is a conflict, the provisions that are specific to cluster development density transfer. However, that, even if we changed it just there, if we kept the minimum lot size requirement for any lot, so take away the lots that might pursue this density transfer, transfer or cluster development, just say a random vacant lot in the RBA that wants to develop as a single family home, but they're less than twenty thousand square feet in size. So even when they install new roads, even when they install new water and sewer, because they're under twenty thousand square feet, if the minimum lot size was not eliminated as is recommended, they still wouldn't be able to have an ADU.
Right. And that would be in opposition to SB two twenty-nine, wouldn't it?
We we could not.
That's true.
But I guess that that's why we were discussing the staff report, the fact that if the city wanted to find that, despite the issues of perceived fairness, that there really are, as we discussed, these other constraints that are unique to the RBA, that you don't feel are adequately addressed by the existing zoning controls we have that limit how much you can develop without bringing things up to code. You could still, under state law, say, we're going to exert this little remaining bit of control and say, we would prefer not to open up, we want to keep that minimum lot size requirement, basically. For any case, that's not a density transfer clustered use or a cluster development use permit.
So you're not meeting the state requirements fully then?
So you could, I think we've cleared with our city attorney that you could retain the twenty thousand square foot minimum in a case that is not a density transfer or a clustered development use permit. The question is, do you want to do that? And that's what the discussion in the staff report was trying to tease out. Do we want to do that? And that is a question for you guys to think about and make a recommendation on to the city council.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that bothers me about some of the upcoming legislation, like SB eight twenty-seven, is it eliminates cities' ability to negotiate in instances like, you know, the the Third Street senior housing project in San Francisco or Joel Diaz's senior housing project here. Those seem less likely to exist at all without, um, you know, the the density allocations afforded to to senior housing. So um similar to that, I would be inclined to maintain the twenty thousand square foot lot limitation in RBA if, in fact, it's permissible under state law to do that, because it gives us something else to negotiate on, you know, should should there be need for it.
Do you get that, Julia?
That's just a one-fourth opinion.
Okay, with that, what's your pleasure, commission? Should we go ahead and send it to, approve it and send it to the council?
Well, I'm I'm actually proposing a change.
Yeah.
Yeah, with that particular change, would that be acceptable to?
So just to clarify, the language in seventeen point four three point oh three oh A.
Could you tell us what page you're on?
A ten.
Let's look at.
Oh, I found it.
Yes, A ten. So seventeen point four three point oh three oh A two would say there's no minimum lot size requirement in the R one, R two, R three or SCRO one district. If the lot is located in the RBA, Brisbane Acres Residential District, the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet is required. And I would also add language referencing the density transfer and cluster development permit. So something to the effect of accept when allowed by a density transfer or cluster development use permit approved by the council. Does that seem, okay?
Yeah, that that is essentially what I'm recommending.
Okay, but that will not be the violation of the state code, huh? Okay.
As far as we know from the city attorney's review, yeah.
Okay, with that change, uh, what's your pleasure, commission now?
I would make a motion, make a motion that we accept zoning text amendment RZ dash two dash one eight in the R one, R two, R three, RBA and SCRO dash one zoning districts. Per the stipulations made in our discussion to be included.
Okay, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. And let me read the appeal process again.
It's going to counsel. It was, it's going to counsel.
It's going to counsel, but you know, still.
Oh, sorry.
We don't need the appeal. If you cannot appeal at this time, right? The commission decision.
You can read.
Pardon me?
You can read it if you'd like.
Is it okay to go ahead with the appeals process? Because somebody might object before it goes to the council. So appeals process, anyone who may appeal the action of planning commission to the city council not later than fifteen calendar days following the planning commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at four one five five zero eight two one one zero. Thank you. Okay, now we're almost reaching to the end of the agenda. There's workshop here, which state housing, housing legislative package. And. Start presentation. So who's going to be the one presenting that? Go ahead, Julia.
So, um, the purpose of this workshop tonight is to give you an overview of just a handful of some of the bills that were passed in this fall of this year relating to how local governments can regulate housing development proposals. So um in September twenty seventeen, Governor Jerry Brown very happily signed many, many housing-related bills, a lot of which impact how we review and approve housing projects as a local jurisdiction. And the three topics or bills we'll be focusing on tonight is amendments to the Housing Accountability Act, SB thirty-five, and the no net loss provision. So the Housing Accountability Act is not a new state statute. It's been around since nineteen eighty-two. Um, and it actually, I think, for a long time was assumed to only apply to how governments consider affordable housing projects, but it applies to any housing project. Um, and I included this excerpt from another presentation that staff had, because I thought it really highlights very clearly what the state's motivation is in not only the original intent of the law in nineteen eighty-two, but why they think that governments just are not stepping up to the plate and why they thought action was needed. So the Housing Accountability Act is codified in section six five five eight nine point five of the California Government Code. Um, and is essentially, the intent of it is to um make it challenging for any housing development project to be either denied or to have its density, proposed density be lowered in any sort of discretionary permit approvals from local jurisdictions. And again, this applies to any housing development project, which is defined as some, a project of residential units or mixed use, as long as at least two-thirds of its square footage is designated to residential use, as well as transitional or supportive housing. And we just included for reference, um, properties in Brisbane that would be considered housing development proposals that are housing developments. Um, so a key provision of the Housing Accountability, Housing Accountability Act is that if a housing project complies with objective standards, meaning objective, quantifiable, zoning, general plan and subdivision standards, a city can only reduce its density or deny it if it can identify specific adverse impacts to the public health and safety that cannot be mitigated. Um, what the recent amendments um to the Housing Accountability Act did was to define what is an objective standard. So as it's quoted here in the text, it really is a standard that involves no personal judgment by a public official. They can be verified by a benchmark or criterion. Um, it's not something that's a secret, that that can only be determined by someone's personal opinion. It is documented and well-known and can be demonstrated it's being met. Um, so these would include development regulations, so our kind of standard building envelope kind of requirements for height, lot coverage, floor area. Um, it would include, I've I've referenced some findings here that perhaps their wording, right, as currently, what you would not interpret them as being objective, but at least they tie back to objective standards we have in our code, minimum areas of landscaping, minimum square footage of outdoor area for employees. We do have standards that are objective and quantifiable that then relate to the findings that have to be made. This is excerpted from chapter seventeen point four two of our uni code for design permit. So the flip side of that, what would be considered subjective standards? Um, well, a lot of, a lot of findings, as it turns out, but we've just pulled a few here. So using, um, these are findings again from our design permit. So a finding that its proposal scale, form and proportion are harmonious. As you might guess, you know, one person's view of a harmonious scale may be very different from the person next to you. It's hard, it's quantifiable. It is not something that can be easily defined and pointed to as, yes, we're we're doing harmonious development. So I think we probably all get this. Um, oops, sorry. So I'll kind of come back around to the very end of this proposal or end of this presentation on what this means for us. But what we're trying to illustrate is we do anticipate that we're going to have to take a look at at a future time at how we review new housing development projects in the context of whether it's a use permit approval. Obviously, we've excerpted design findings in this presentation, but you know, there are a whole host of other permits that might apply to residential development projects that we're going to have to take a closer look at and make sure are achieving the city's goals.
The number two and number three is kind of a little problematic, you know? If you look at the orientation and location of the buildings, they all, they are not really truly subjective. Same thing with the hillside development. The topography will dictate what needs to be done. So how can it be subjective?
Well, it's subjective in that an engineer might come before you and say, I'm a licensed engineer. I've looked at this site. I think it can support X height of building or X whatever.
Yeah, but he has, he has to prove it, you know? He has to show some kind of objective.
I think the thing to focus on is what the state considers objective is something that can either be assigned a number. So whether that's the height of a building, the height of a wall, how much, that that's what the state is.
That has been a standard all along. We we already assume that the building height should not be more than thirty feet or thirty-five feet or forty feet, whatever. So that's, how that's going to be a.
I think we can have a, I mean, when when we come back with code amendments that we think are required to um comply with the requirements of state law, we can certainly have a robust conversation about those words and the various findings. I think, again, um, you know, minimize its visual impact, for example. Well, what happens at the building, and I'm sure you can all recall cases where a building met the height limit, but there were design desires to see it lowered, right? So you had a height limit, which is the presumptive standard, but through a design process, there was pressure or requirement to reduce it below its maximum allowed standard. For example, that's the difference between an objective standard, a height limit, and a subjective minimizing visual impact of the height by reducing the height from.
Yeah, but the visual impact is another thing that's going to cause a lot of problems when it comes to subjective versus the objective.
You are correct.
Because the thing is, they can put an ugly big wall there, and you say that's all, that's okay, objectively is fine, but subjectively is not, because you need some kind of a treatment to make it look better, you know? And same thing with all the others, minimum height and minimum depth and minimum square footage areas. These are all subjective, you know, because how, how you going to, how you going to objectively define that thirty feet is an appropriate height or ten feet.
Okay, the process to determine our standards, you're saying, is still. Okay, the process to determine our standards, you're saying, is still a subjective process.
A lot of it.
I won't argue with that. But a thirty-foot height limit is an objective standard.
It's a subjective standard.
Okay.
I mean, where did the thirty feet come from? You know, who said that we cannot have a twenty feet?
The, the law does not require us to have a subjective process under which we determine the objective standards that will apply.
So, then what will happen to our thirty feet?
We can still have a subjective process within whatever other limits legally would apply to us, so long as the standards that we evaluate projects, housing projects with, are objective.
This is gonna be a very catch-twenty-two situation here, and it's gonna be very difficult to, uh, to satisfy. Anybody can come and argue, you know? If you give this to the attorney, he's gonna say, "My, my client has thirty-two feet high building, and you're saying you cannot build it, because you, uh, subjectively decided it has to be such and such," you know?
Right, that's what...
I see your point, um, I don't, I, I would think most attorneys would beg to differ that if there's a setback or a height standard that's in the code, that, you know, they're not gonna unwind why, the basis of which that standard was established twenty years ago or fifty years ago. That is the standard, that is the, to the extent that they don't, won't be able to argue for a higher height that complies with that, um, you know? The, the challenge would be in those cases where a lower height might be, you know, acceptable to community.
The problem is, this is, there is no, uh, uniform standards throughout the, throughout the whole country or throughout the whole state. So, each state, each city has their own requirements. Unless you follow the building code. Well, building code doesn't go into the specific height and all of those. It's set by the local regulation.
We're still allowed to make our own objective standards. They just have to be objective. The standards themselves have to be objective. The process to create them doesn't have to.
How are you gonna say that thirty feet is an objective height?
It's, it's a numeric, we can, we can argue about whether a thirty-foot-high building is ugly, or pretty, or bad, or good, but we're all gonna be in agreement that it's thirty feet tall. And that's, that's the objective part of the standard.
If you ask me for the objective rationale for that, each building...
The, the regulations are not about the rationale. We still get to have our own rationale.
No, but objectively, the, the uniform building code says eight feet high. If the building, the room height should be eight feet high.
Oh, it's...
So, if you, so if you have a two-tiered, two-story, then it's twenty, eight times two is sixteen. So, is that, that's...
It's not, this, this law is not saying that we have to now not have any sort of community process to determine in our zoning code what acceptable development standards are. We still get to decide that, we still have that power.
Yeah, but the thing is, this really changes the, the thinking of the planning commissioners here, because the thing is...
That you're thinking...
These are the, these are the important elements we look at if any application comes before us.
Yes.
And now, uh, we will be subjected to scrutiny by the state requirements here, and I don't know whether I, I, I can subjectively say, uh, objectively say that I don't like this facade.
I think the...
You cannot say that, right?
The point of, yeah.
And there's another whole element to this, too, is we're getting hung up on these subjective standards, which we need to be very mindful of.
Yeah.
But there's also a connection, which Julia, if we don't get to tonight, we're gonna make, is that the, this is all in the context of a basis to deny a project or reduce the density. So, arguably, if you had a subjective standard about design, you could still modify the physical design of the structure as long as it doesn't result in a, either denial of the project or a reduction in its density. I mean, we're talking about all sorts of different things in play, and I know we've sort of picked examples, and I think all really trying to get you tonight to do is be thinking about this, because we'll come back in a lot more detail to go through this, you know, on a discreet set of applications. It's kind of tee you up for, these are some of the, and I think you raise a lot of very interesting points that will need to be, you know, addressed through the amendment process.
What I recommend is, I think we should have a separate workshop for this, and also bring some of the industry experts in this field, that they can give us some, some ways to explain that, because this is the basis for the planning commission review. And if that's gonna be affecti- affecting us, then it will make it very difficult to, to judge on any, any of the design review of the projects. So, at a later date, if I'm still planning commissioners, I will require that, that, I mean, I suggest that, that we should have some, uh, a separate workshop on that and, and go over each of the scenarios, and, and how are you gonna handle that?
Yeah, we can do that through the various, you know, all the design permit findings.
Yeah.
All the use permit findings. Uh, yeah, that can be done in a, this was a really...
That would be very, very useful for everyone, you know?
Yeah, we just wanted to kind of provide an overview tonight, get you thinking about it. We'll provide more information and allow for more sort of dialogue as we move forward with this.
Yeah. Uh, did you guys get the gist of it, what I'm talking about here? Because this is the, this is the heart of the planning commission's review, when you do the design review. Because a lot of our review is also subjective.
Well, I think, I think according to the law, what's, what it's saying now, if, if we're gonna deny a project, we have to make sure that our findings are based upon the objective facts. So, we just have to be clear in our, in the reasoning that we give, and that it's not something that's subjective. So, I think that's what we're trying to...
But the objective is very difficult to get in some of these things, you know? Because they are, they are subjective, you know?
That's right, so that will be our charge, is how do we make the findings we have now that may be considered subjective actually tied to quantifiable objective standards? That's, that's the process we'll go through. We're not gonna do that tonight. That's not tonight. Okay.
Yeah, and we're not, we don't want the position, the, the commission to be in a position where, by law, we have a series of subjective findings, and now you're trying to objectively prove that these subjective standards are met or not. So, we're trying to create a set of findings and, um, requirements that will be much more, um, supportive of, of your, both your desires and your limitations, and everybody's legal limitations on what we can do and how we can operate.
And I think we have to educate the, the general public also, because they, they will come before us with the same type of questions, subjective questions, and, you know, "I don't like the, the color of this." But now we don't have any say in that, you know? So, those kind of things, we need to have the, get the general public involved also, and I...
Sure, and we just wanna emphasize that what we're talking about here are things to reduce or deny, reduce yield or deny a project, not changing its physical appearance that is, you know, not impacting its ultimate availability or yield.
Well, go on, Julia, I didn't mean to, to interrupt you so much, but...
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay. Onto the next. So, Senate Bill Thirty-five. Um, you've probably heard a little, if not a lot, about this bill. Um, this bill, similarly, I've excerpted again just some language from the legislative intent, um, why the state felt it was necessary to basically create a ministerial approval process for a very limited class of projects, and then subject them to very specific requirements. Um, but nonetheless, this, um, establishes a streamlined ministerial approval process for certain multifamily housing development projects. Those projects have to meet very specific objective planning standards. Uh, we've listed them, or summarized them here. So, for example, if a development wanted to opt in and ask for this streamlined approval process, it would not be eligible if there were wetlands on the site, if it was on a hazardous waste, um, site, if it's within a habitat conservation plan area. If there, anyway, there's a whole list of, uh, conditions that would render a site ineligible for this streamlined process. If there was a site that did meet all those objective requirements, the project would also need to be conditioned to include prevailing wage and union workforce, if it's over a ten-unit project. Um, in, for the city of Brisbane, we are required to have a fifty percent of the total units be affordable to low-income households, to moderate and low-income households. That's because we have not produced enough housing units in the eyes of the state of California. Um, they would also, uh, in addition to being dedicated as affordable at the time they were offered, they would have to record resale and rent restriction agreements for forty-five to fifty-five years.
So, in this particular case, or in the case of, uh, baylands, we, we require them fifty percent of the unit to be...
It's a hazardous waste site, so it's not...
It wouldn't apply.
The hazardous waste site, but that's excluded unless the Department of Toxic Substance Control has declared the site for residential use.
If that's the case.
Yeah.
It doesn't apply automatically, the developer would have to opt in, and, and that risk of saying a little too much, I'd...
But then, if, as I read it, you know, this Department of Substances, Toxic Substance Abuse, uh, not abuse, uh, whatever that agency is. If there is, uh, they say that it's not a hazardous site, which may be the case, then...
That's not the case, that's to be factual here.
I'm just saying, hypothetically, let's say it may be the case, then we are to, uh, they are to come up with fifty percent, uh...
The developer would have to agree.
Fifty percent of...
It doesn't matter, let's put anywhere in Brisbane. Let's say it were the...
Eligible.
Yeah.
Um, something on San Bruno Avenue. They would have to be fifty percent affordable to take advantage of the streamlining criteria.
And would that work on the senior housing also? I mean, fifteen, the senior housing is already...
It, it only applies if the developer opts into it, so... And they would have to meet all those other requirements as well.
For example, that, that senior housing project that we approved...
Senior project you just reviewed would not have qualified, because it is not fifty percent affordable.
Which one not qualified?
The, the, the one you approved on San Bruno Avenue?
Yeah.
That would not have qualified for SB thirty-five, because it was, uh, not fifty percent affordable.
Will not qualify?
Correct.
So, that means, uh, they're, when they come before the application, uh, before the planning commission, we will have to deny that?
No, it's a different, it's, it's a different, thirty-five is a, I look at it as a tool that's available to developer, right? So, there's this tool that if I meet all these criteria, and I agree to these things, then I can, the city is obligated to process my application in a certain way, so...
But if it doesn't meet fifty percent, what?
Then, then, then the developer, by their choice, is not meeting the criteria to take advantage of the tool. They can still proceed with a regular project through the city's regular procedure. They don't have to, you know, they're, they don't have to follow SB thirty-five. It's not mandatory for them, it's not mandatory for the city. It is mandatory if the developer meets all those conditions and wants to move forward, but it's not mandatory for a developer to, to, to utilize those provisions.
So, in case of baylands, they, they don't want to follow the SB thirty-five, and they don't have to live with fifty percent unit affordable?
Actually, again, since the baylands isn't, doesn't qualify in probably several criteria in terms of the amount of area with mixed use and the, and the fact that it's a hazardous site, there are several exclusions. But for the sake of our robust discussion, if it did qualify, the developer would have to have agreed, or would have to agree to have fifty percent affordable to be able to utilize the SB thirty-five provision.
So, what, what you're saying is that, uh, baylands will still go through the rigorous, uh, process that we have?
Yes.
It will not be streamlined?
Not under SB thirty-five.
That's interesting, because that, that's quite contrary to what people were saying about SB thirty-five. Okay, anyhow, go ahead.
I was wondering if you could expand on that line about dedicating fifty percent of the units to households below eighty percent AMI? Because historically, affordable housing has been, uh, controlled by the size of the unit, and I'm wondering, how do you target a unit for eighty percent AMI?
Uh, resale or rent restriction that's recorded with the deed, and then is subject to a specified resale process. We, we have already, in the city of Brisbane, under our former redevelopment agency, we have many, many properties in town that, for example, are subject to resale restriction agreements that say...
Yeah, I think they wanted the corner of Glen Park and San Bruno, I, I did that.
Well, yeah, without naming specifics, several, many properties in town are subject to such a resale agreement.
We have done that, actually, in the past.
I don't suppose you'd...
And, so I guess, do you want me to talk a little bit more about that, so...
I, I was just wondering if you had a, a reference to the bill or the legal structure that I could read the actual definition of how that works?
You can...
To not derail this.
I think, yeah, offline, I think we can probably give you a template of a resale restriction agreement that our housing authority, our RDA, would have had. But I guess the, the general idea being, a buyer for a deed-restricted property has to go through income verification to show through their income that they qualify as, as whatever level of affordability they need to, subject to that specific unit's restriction. Um, if a, if a owner wants to then sell that same unit, there are certain restrictions on the resale price, and there are limitations on you have to sell it to someone else who is low or moderate income.
Right, I, I understand the, the buyer's restriction. I was just curious, mostly for my own interests, about how that ties into the sales price, and I imagine you probably couldn't answer that at this time, but...
Yeah, we can give you templates, right? Oh, right, when it comes to the actual household income limits, sorry, that's established by the state HCD, based on HUD data every year.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm mostly interested in how that amount correlates to housing price and what the process is. It's technical details mostly for my own interests.
Sure, if you wanna follow up separately, we're happy to talk with you about it.
Thanks.
Are we following up on those units that we approved in the past for the low income, income housing?
Oh, yes.
Because there were several of them that I was involved, and it was a very complicated formula to come up with that requirement.
Right, so with the RDA dissolving and the housing authority now taking over, um, yes, the, any sort of, whether it's an annual letter that we send out to owners to say, "Please verify per your agreement, all these various things, you're still complying with our requirements." Yes, we're still monitoring all active resale, uh, restricted resale agreements. Okay, um, related to SB thirty-five, so...
Also, one more question. Do you follow the, the income level? Because if they, they got in that unit with a low income, and now, and all of a sudden...
That we cannot kick someone out of a house they bought just because they got a better job with a higher income. As long as you qualify at the time you purchase, we don't have... The only, in our, in our, uh, resale restriction agreements, basically, there are very few instances in which we can terminate, either if it's a loan that we gave, or, and that usually comes with the fact that you are no longer residing in that unit, if you're, like, leasing it out, renting it out. That's not allowed. Um, there are very few circumstances that someone who bought a house could be made to leave it.
Because some of the, some people who did ask me the questions, because there were a couple of units that were under this particular program, and now those people have Mercedes and Jaguar sitting outside their house. And they're wondering, how can they be...
Again, we cannot, there is not a legal venue for us to evict someone from a house they own, because they now make more money than they did when they bought it. Okay. Um, so, we can still apply...
Before we go there, is there any possibility of re-review that process? Because at that time when we did that, uh, it was very complicated, and, and I think there are some, some new, you know, people here, new commissioners. It might be a good idea to, uh, to revisit that, because I'm sure we will be looking at this on a number of units now, because it's becoming a, you know, there's a big talk about affordable housing, and, uh...
Yeah, I think we can provide some basic overview. Uh, again, I'm, um, not having had a lot of these projects in my time here. They were normally administered through the city managers, the actual details of what the agreements were and the, the restrictions. Um, it wasn't something that the planning commission necessarily had a lot of discretionary authority over, but as an informational item, we can certainly provide it to be...
Yeah, I think we did, we did discuss, and I, I remember we did give some recommendations, uh, at that time. That was a number of years ago, when, uh...
Sure, we can look into that.
Carol Nelson was the planning commissioner, uh, not, planning director at that time.
Okay. So, we can still subject a project that opts into the SB thirty-five streamlined process, assuming it's eligible and assuming they opt in, and still be subjected to design review or other public oversight. That design review has to be objective and focused on assessing how it complies with our criteria. It also has to be completed within strict timelines. The third provision of the housing package we want to talk about was the no-net-loss provision, and this relates to the housing element inventory. So, in the housing element, we have to identify what properties, either under existing zoning, or if we don't have enough properties adequately zoned, what sites... what sites could be rezoned to accommodate our regional housing needs allocation. Um, currently, we have sites identified with a realistic development capacity. That's either based on market trends or the maximum, you know, density allowed under the zoning and general plan. Um, you know, it's, it's a prediction based on solid reasoning of what we expect that site to develop with, uh, should it come forward for a development application. Um, this amendments to the law under this provision would require the city to identify, potentially identify alternative sites should a project be approved on a site for a lesser, uh, density or number of units than was projected in the housing element inventory. So say in the housing element inventory, we say, this site we think has a realistic capacity of five units. And a development proposal for the developing that site comes forward and only four units are proposed and only four units are approved. That's one unit fewer than what was projected. The city would then be obligated to either find in, to provide for that lost, uh, unit elsewhere within existing zoning, or if there is no more capacity on other sites, to identify potential rezoning of parcels to accommodate that unmet need. Um, we also, at the city, cannot disapprove a project that comes in at a level underneath the projected level in our housing element. So we cannot require, um, just by identifying in the housing element inventory to be developed at a certain capacity. Of course, there are other tools we could use should we so choose, like minimum densities, for example, rather than just maximums. But as it stands, if someone wants to develop a property at a lesser density than what we projected it at, we have to find another site for those lost units. We always have to have a full inventory at all times. So as you can imagine, uh, like we discussed, where staff is going to have, and the city attorney are going to evaluate our existing zoning ordinance for any necessary updates. So pertaining to the HAA Housing Accountability Act, um, SB thirty-five, really our focus will be the objectivity of our standards and how can we, um, make those more compliant in every way while still achieving the community's goals. Um, we'll also have to just evaluate the housing element inventory as projects arise. That'll be an ongoing process that we really can't predict until projects come forward, um, what actions may be required. So, um, all of these issues, especially in these zoning ordinance amendments, I think as the chair has already indicated, we'll have to get a lot of public involvement, workshops, obviously ultimately hearings, uh, before you and the city council. So it will be a public process. We just wanted to highlight these issues tonight, let you know that we are working on them. If I could give a timeline and-
I'm, uh, I have a question, uh, Julia, regarding the previous one, uh, previous slide. When you talk about we have to make up the, like, five units and we build only four. Who will make up that, that lost unit one?
We do.
I mean, we just had, we just had to identify that at a different site.
Like more Rena.
Yeah. We don't have to build it. So the housing element doesn't require us to build anything. But we do have to always have a full inventory of, of properties, of sites that can be developed to accommodate our, our need.
Now, that will be, in the past, the housing element didn't impose any conditions that we have to have that.
No, this is a new requirement.
Yes, it's just, we came up with a recommended number, so seventy-five or eighteen or, in the past, that's the number.
The realistic development capacity is-
Twenty or thirty. So now they're changing that way. But who, but they decide, right, we, we don't have, we have some input, but the housing element requirements coming from the state, right?
You mean the Rena?
Yeah.
The Rena, yes.
Yeah. And in this particular case, I last go around, I think we have, somebody put in forty-five hundred homes in the, in the baylands. So we, that's the new housing element requirement?
No, that's, that's a whole nother regional planning process. Um, the Rena will, the city's Rena is fixed through, um, twenty-twenty-two and then it'll be revisited as part of that upcoming housing element. And what they'll look at, I mean, even, but in the intervening period with Julie, Julia's talking about is between now and the end of this next housing element period of twenty-twenty-two, that we have to maintain our inventory of adequate sites. So, for example, I, I'm not too worried about this because, um, the city's, in terms of our housing element, is very conservative in terms of the projections or assumptions that how these sites would develop based on past practice. So we were not overly aggressive in unrealistically estimating development trends. For example, the senior project we approved, uh, I think the housing element only assumed maybe three units on that site. So we're to the good, we're actually built more than our housing element, you know, projection showed for that site. So we actually have a bit of a credit on that particular development. It developed at a higher yield than we anticipated. So, but there may be others that work the other way and they develop at a lesser amount than the housing element anticipated.
But my understanding was that the reason we, we looked at the park side project is because of the housing element needs. And-
It, it is.
Uh, but, uh, we don't have that many houses, uh, listed in a number on the housing element is not that, that great. So why we need a bigger project like, uh, Parkside to support that?
Because we had, or we had a shortfall from the previous two thousand and five housing element.
But that's going on from the day one since I've become a planning commissioner.
Well, the shortfall, our two thousand and five Rena was four hundred and eighty units. And we did not have that many sites. So, uh, we were obligated to meet that. Uh, we weren't able to, and that's what the Parkside was to make up the difference. We also get credit for infill opportunities, you know, in the various zones, the R-two, the R-three, SCRO. You know, so if you look at the index of the housing element, there's literally an address-by-address base in terms of what we consider the realistic capacity of all zoning districts. It's not just limited to Parkside.
If you don't meet the requirements, by twenty-twenty, we had to save four hundred and fifty units and we only built fifty units.
Well, right now it's not-
Is the state going to come up to the city and?
Well, right now, there's, um, you know, there, there is an emphasis on not just accommodating sites, but actually production. And I think that's part of what's going on is this, this, and I think it's an evolving sort of area of state legislation of how much pressure and what will the, uh, uh, impact be on local jurisdictions where housing is not produced? Because I'm not saying this, you know, the ci- city doesn't produce housing and I think that's always been the main problem is it, it's the private sector that develops ninety-nine percent of the housing. So the idea that the ci- city is somehow accountable for the production of the private sector is somewhat antithetical to, to a lot of people and, and difficult to swallow when you're made, be made accountable for how the private sector, you know, performs. But, you know, it's, it is an evolving field and I suspect the state will become more and more rigorous in their, their, uh, critique of cities.
Of the land as well as affordability, all of those factors come in, even though there, there might be a site available, but if it requires five hundred thousand dollars to build a little unit, then, you know, I don't know how they're going to, uh... If, if the city doesn't meet the requirements, what will be the punishment for the city? Or, or penalty for the city? And that's, that's always a-
That's the unknown. And right now, Rena is not a production, right? Rena is a-
But it's heading that way.
Yeah, that's, that's the worry that by twenty-twenty-two, you know, there may be a different ballgame in terms of what the city's obligations are that are imposed by the state of California on us.
Wow. Anyhow, I've got a lot of questions, uh, answered. Thank you so much. And, uh, anybody else has any questions for the staff? So I, I still suggest that at some point, we should have the long discussion on that in a special session, probably one day, say, one meeting. Okay? Now, any, any of the, uh, people in the audience, if they have any questions regarding the discussion we had here? Feel free to talk. Uh, Barbara, you've been-
Only because you insist, then.
Only because I insist. No, I mean, it's good to get the public feedback also, you know?
Yeah, no, I had just, um, earlier realized I had wanted to know a little bit about the, I think it's Solidex well. I didn't know any, there was a well out there. What does this subsidence well look like? I was just, I suppose I can Google it if you don't have it off the top of your head. I don't know anything.
I mean, the first, the first case or the?
Yeah.
Oh, they were, they were, had a, the developer had a pad out there to, and they were testing, just checking the rate of settlement, the ground settlement. So they basically had a pad for probably seven years and they were taking data in terms of what the level of subsidence or settlement was. I don't, I don't have the results of the, yeah, yeah. It's basically two.
Okay. So ne- next item is the items initiated by staff.
I think we've initiated enough for one evening, if anything else.
I, I heard the, I heard the rumor. I mean, I will wait until the item initiated by the commission.
Just a reminder, March second is our deadline for the Commissioners Academy. We have one commissioner signed up. So, any last takers?
We, we cannot sign up until we know whether we're going to be here or not.
Guess you could cancel.
Okay, never mind. I retract that statement.
I guess we can cancel it. I'd like to go, but I don't know whether I'll be the chosen one or-
Yeah, we, we have some, um, you'll have some flexibility. You can let us know whatever happens with the appointments and if you're interested, just let us know.
Okay. Um, I just heard the, this thing, I forgot the name of those two. You know, there is a prime city versus the, there was a little discussion, uh, last week with, uh, two council members. Uh, they're trying to figure out whether Brisbane should be like a designated city like, like San Francisco, Los Angeles and all that versus the, there's, uh, I forgot the name of the other part. And there are advantages and disadvantages in terms of it gives them more autonomy for us to, to, uh, to come up with our own set of standards and all that. Did you hear about that?
Charter city is what he's talking about.
Charter city, yeah.
I'm not sure if, um, I'm sure it's something the city attorney would be looking at for the city council. Um, again, there is typically a little, much more latitude or freedom that a charter city has as opposed to what they call a general law city in California.
Yeah, yeah. That's, those are the two terms.
Yeah, those are the two terms and I assume the city attorney would be doing the research, um, in terms of whether or not-
Do you know the timeline as when they're going to have workshop on that or discussion?
I don't know, but we can certainly find out and let you know.
That would be an interesting view. Uh, any of you heard about that? And I'm the commissioner. So have you heard that? That would be interesting thing because that will change the, uh, the way we deal, the business, they do the business here. Because there's, this, where the state is going, I'm afraid that our hands will be really tied, you know? Anyhow, uh, our interviews are coming up for the planning commissioners. Uh, I, I'm glad to see so many people applied and, uh, be interesting to see what they, who they're going to pick. So I guess the results will be in a couple of weeks or maybe right after that. Who knows? Okay. Um, anything else, uh, that you guys want to say? And, and thank you very much for, to put up with me. And, uh, at this point, um, I make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen at seven-thirty PM. And, uh, I make, uh, so anybody wants to second?
I'll second that.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I may not be attending that meeting.